Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Council Communications and Announcements. These are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Why don't we start with Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just three brief items. One is I wanted to mention that I think other people probably had seen this as well. Bill Nack, the head of the Building Trades Labor Council in San Mateo County, is going to be retiring after a long and successful career in early March. I wish him the best in his future endeavors and thank him for his service. I also had an opportunity to review or have participated in a review of the Wheeler Plaza Project, which was exciting. Some questions, but good thing moving forward. And I just learned something that I think the rest of my colleagues know, that Matt is unfortunately ill tonight, so I hope he gets better soon.
Okay. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item I wanted to bring to the council's attention, I am chairing a sort of steering committee for an event that we're going to hold later this year, August 30th, to promote the restaurant industry in San Carlos. And Crystal, I don't know if you can pull up the logo. So the event now has a name. It has a logo, which is up on the screen, if you guys want to take a look. So it's called the Taste of Good Living Event. And what it is, is it's going to be an event on Laurel Street to highlight the restaurant industry. We're going to shut down a couple blocks of Laurel Street, run a long communal table, and there'll be an opportunity to sample cuisine from all the great San Carlos restaurants. And so the logo was designed by our community outreach coordinator, Laura Tuchel, and the event is being put on in coordination with the Chamber of Commerce and a number of restaurants in town. So looking forward to that.
Great. Thank you. Bob?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And I just actually have one item. I was fortunate to be able to attend the Community Crab Feed last night that benefited the Adult Community Center. And I ate more than I should, but it was a good time and ended up donating a lot of money. Okay. Moving along, any comments by staff?
Yes, a few this evening, Mr. Mayor. Couple updates on the strategic plan. Wanted to let the council and the community know that we've selected a vendor for the new Community Response Management System, the new CRM. And the project go-live date is spring of 2015. You'll see more details forthcoming on that. We also received three responses to our RFP for new business registration software systems, who we're currently demoing those. And we'll be making a selection shortly, so that'll be a nice upgrade to that system. We've had a number of recruitments ongoing, and we've got some staff changes that are underway. Couple things that we're currently recruiting for now. We're looking for summer recreation leaders and Recreation II leaders for our summer programs. We're currently interviewing for civil engineer technician, and we've got interviews scheduled later this week for our senior account position. We've got three new staff folks joining the city. First, and I believe she's here tonight, if you want to wave your hand, Grace Lee, our new city engineer.
Hi, Grace.
So welcome, Grace. Grace comes to us from the city of Redwood City, where she was a senior engineer. We've also got a new face in the City Clerk Community Development Department, just started today, Terry Payton, comes to us from the city of Burlingame. And on March 2nd, we're going to have a new Economic Development Coordinator, Nellie Seelander, coming to us from Bart.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We are in the public comment section now. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters that are not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more than five individuals wishing to speak during public comment, I'll draw five speaker cards, and I don't have five speaker cards to draw unless a bunch of them come flooding in in the next 20 seconds. If you are speaking on an item that's not on the agenda, please be advised that the council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed. We only may briefly respond. Under the Brown Act, we cannot make any engaged lengthy comments. And our policy is generally to refer any items to staff that may have a future effect and may need to be placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. All right. Our first speaker is Mitch Smith.
I would just like to open up with an inspiration to parents. Raise a child in the way he should go, and when he grows old, he will not depart from Mayor, council members, staff, thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Mitchell Smith, owner and operator of Solar Technology Builders located in Oakley, California. As a proud registered solar contractor with the HERO program, I respectfully urge the council to conduct the necessary research to adopt this program in San Carlos. HERO stands for Home Energy Renovation Opportunity. Part of the PACE program, property assess clean energy. In communities where HERO is adopted, homeowners are able to receive financing for water and energy conservation improvements and repay the debt by making their payment through a line item on their tax bill. This amazing benefit of HERO provides property tax financing to homeowners with no FICA score requirements at low tax deductible rates for energy efficient products and installations. This investment stays with the property when the homeowner sells. I personally use this program in the greater Bay Area for the last few years and has helped me to grow my business. I have many customers in San Carlos who would like to use this program to upgrade their homes and make them more energy efficient. 100% of customers that have used this program have expressed to me, had the HERO program not been in their community, they would not have been able to make the move to solar. The HERO program is a terrific opportunity and a perfect fit for any community. It can generate revenue for the city, create jobs, put money back into the pockets of the residents, and usher in the future of energy efficiency while enhancing property values. The HERO program is a win-win for everyone involved. I like to think of myself as an energy efficient leader and consultant in the community. Recently, I was invited to a press release with former mayor Chuck Reed of San Jose, where the HERO program is enjoying success. While at this press release, my interview received both state and national coverage. I would be honored to mention, excuse me, San Carlos as one of the communities that has adopted the HERO program. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you for your interest in the HERO program for a city as forward-thinking as San Carlos.
Thank you, Mitch.
And then I just have a little bit of brochure.
Okay. You can just give them to the city clerk there. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dimitri Vandelos. And Gina Vandelos has given her time to Dimitri, so you get four minutes.
Awesome. I'll take six. I ask that you pull Item J from the consent calendar. I don't think we need to spend an extra $10,000 on a parking permit program. I think you need to hear from the residents of the community. Now I want to talk about why I'm really here. It's L'Oreola Park neighborhood. This City Council and staff seem determined to attack our neighborhood at every turn at an unprecedented pace. We just fought a prolonged battle on the Transit Village, where by any reasonable standard, one would say that a compromise was reached. But now, from our perspective, it seems that staff at council have taken the tack, that the city lost that battle, and that the L'Oreola neighborhood must get payback for being active citizens. The residents of San Carlos need to understand that the L'Oreola Park neighborhood has had Holly Street turned into a mini freeway with lanes that aren't wide enough, with corresponding increase in truck traffic, speeding, and accidents. We're having a hotel complex proposed immediately across the street from our homes. We're dealing with a high school from the school district on a parcel of land that would have been an inexpensive acquisition by the city to expand parkland and mitigate the impacts of the Transit Village. Indeed, because of inaction on the part of this City Council and staff, we have this school district proposal that has a strong potential to destroy our community park, while council tries to drum up support for a bond measure that will cost every citizen significant amounts of money. We have an EDAC meeting on Tuesday, where they're talking about bringing hotels right next to our neighborhood yet again. That item was pulled from the agenda after action by diligent residents of this community. Staff falsely claimed that the rezoning for hotels was discussed with the neighborhood in a report to the planning commission, but luckily that was pulled. We have a proposed parking plan that wants to take away residence spots in the residential neighborhood and give them to businesses. We're now learning that there are 100-foot tall buildings being proposed that are way too close to the community. Since when did the residents of San Carlos tell City Council that we want to become the next San Jose, Redwood City, or San Mateo? The residents of San Carlos didn't choose to move here to have this council turn us into an overpopulated community filled with 100-foot high-rise buildings. We've had a stop sign removed that increased danger to our community. This was recently brought back, so thank you for that. However, the Public Works Director seems more intent on making Sam Trans happy than the residents of this city and feels he can do whatever he wants and override community input whenever and wherever he likes. As a matter of fact, we tried to get over to this council meeting and had a, we pressed the stop, you know, the button to walk across Old County Road, couldn't get across it because of the timing favors the cars, not the residents. This isn't progress. This is a sellout to developers. It's a money grab, and frankly, this council has declared an outright war on the L'Oreola Park neighborhood. We're not going to stand idly by while you destroy the fabric of our community and reduce our quality of life. Where are your surveys that asked L'Oreola Park residents how we feel the city is treating us? From my perspective, you have no interest in working cooperatively. You simply want to dismantle our community piece by piece by overwhelming us with project after project, so we have no time to respond. We need a serious intervention here, because this City Council and staff are taking things too fast and too far. And you gentlemen on the dais will hear from the voters. You'll get yourselves voted out of office while our city manager continues his agenda to just transform this community for the worse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dimitri. Paul Maginetti?
Members of council, staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to discuss the issue of hazardous waste that has been lying underground for decades. Last May, some of the East Side neighborhood, not all of it, only ones within a very small radius of it, were notified of a toxic tar sludge that was coming up through the floor of a building in a nearby business. That tar and sludge had a pH of 1.7, it had PCBs, it had lead, it had chromium. So they went in there with their hazmat suits and they scooped out as much as they could and did their testing. It's still there. It's 16 feet down. But since the building is pre-existing, the DTSC decided, well, it's only going to cost $10,000 to just leave it there. It's going to cost the owner almost a million to take it out. So that's what happens when you build over a toxic site. I have here an email from Sam Trans, and they say they can cut, reduce the total excavation by 75%, saving up to $3 million by not removing that pollution. Just like with this other one, it's going to be there forever. And that material does not stay there. That is a watershed. It's the Pulgas watershed. It ends up coming out of the Pulgas pump station into the bay, of which you have been sued, I know, in the past for dumping toxic waste into the bay. So I'm on the hook for all of that. We all are. And I really think that staff needs to pay very careful attention to how the San Carlos Transit Village is mitigated, that it's mitigated completely and not half-assed, excuse me, because we all live downhill from that.
Can you wrap it up?
Yeah. Let me just wrap up with one last quote. "It is always the unfortunate who are the first to be deserted by the goodwill of men."
Thank you. Patty Marsters?
You're here to talk on 7A?
No, I'm also here to talk about...
Oh, you want to also talk on an item that's not on the agenda?
Something that's not on the agenda.
All right. I apologize.
I hope you do...
I'm sorry. You had both of them on here, so go proceed.
I would like to listen to the parking permit, permit parking report, and I agree with Dimitri's request that you remove the consultant fee from the consent calendar, but I want to take this opportunity to speak about the 10-story buildings for San Carlos that were mentioned in the strategic... Wait a minute. You're, I don't have my full two minutes, and it's going to take me two minutes.
I'm sorry. Let me reset it. Go ahead. You have full two minutes.
They were mentioned at the strategic planning meeting, so two questions. Are any of these the hotels that the city is changing the zoning to accommodate? And how much over 100 feet are the finished buildings supposed to be? And I'd be happy to drop these questions if you just remember that the city has a height limit. So I keep hearing from the council that height is in our future, and I'm not sure if that's an attempt to rationalize extending the height limit now to build for the future. So I suggest you look at the Tower Plaza on El Camino in San Mateo. I know you know the building. It's built at least 40 years ago, and it's still waiting for the future growth to materialize. And remember the amount of sentiment that against growing into another Redwood City or San Mateo. It's like Dimitri and I exchanged notes, but I'm thinking back to the visioning when people said, "We like San Carlos the way it is." So then I was thinking, maybe the city council member that said this a couple times already, maybe he means height is in our future because we have very few buildings that reach the current limit, but still we have enough examples already used in city documents and at city meetings, there are examples of what not to do and how not to build buildings. And so I'd like to say the general plan was developed and reviewed by a cross-section of residents and businesses and approved by this council, including maybe one of you. And so you're probably more familiar with it than I am. And with all the work done to identify and address the city's needs, regional problems, state mandates, all while promoting business, preserving residential neighborhoods, all within the 50-foot height limit for the next 15 years. So I say stick to the plan. Direct staff to stick to the plan and just say, "No. No, developers, we have a height limit." Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Okay? All right. Moving along to our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of procedure that I'm unclear on. So does the request from the members of the public to pull that particular item, does that, that pulls that item off, correct?
I believe it does. All right. Okay.
And I believe that was Item J, correct?
Item J.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Items 6A through I and K, L, and M.
A second.
All right. Motion and second. Crystal?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item seven, we are now at reports to council. These are just updates to, on key city project by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature and no action, action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Okay. Mr. Malpe? Is that you, or? It's not. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Elaine Hostel, the special projects director. And hi, I'm giving the presentation tonight on, an update on the Greater East San Carlos Residential Parking Permit Program, with the idea of giving the council a chance to find out sort of the approach that we plan to take and any questions you have and any directions and thoughts you have as we move forward. As background, the idea of having a residential parking permit program was actually approved as a condition of the Transit Village project, with the stipulation that the permits have to be free, that the majority of owners must consent in writing to having this parking permit program implemented, and that it has to be implemented before the Transit Village project construction, which is probably about six to seven months out or ready for implementation before that. The Transit Village project condition of approval really went, had a large area as a possible inclusion in this parking permit program. It went east from Old County Road to Industrial Road and from Hall Street to Norwood Drive. So it was basically the whole East San Carlos, Greater East San Carlos area. It's also, this parking permit program was included by the council in your strategic plan, and at the December 8th, 2014 meeting, the council was presented with a petition from several people representing several blocks south of Holly Street in the East San Carlos area. And their proposal was that the three blocks that were included were the 1,000 blocks of McHugh, the 900 block of Cherry, and the 1,000 block of Montgomery Street, and there were a number of signatures from each of those blocks, asking that the council implement a program, a residential parking program, that would restrict parking for people who didn't have those permits for two hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, that each household in the neighborhood would be given two parking permits plus options for more parking permits for babysitters, contractors, et cetera, guests. And a number of questions from neighborhood residents about how this might be implemented, how it would work. And so since that time, staff from Community Development, Public Works, the Sheriff's Department, and the city manager's option, office have been sitting down with that petition, with the permit condition, and looking at some of the experiences of other communities and looking at the issues that we need to address as we work with the community to look at this residential parking permit program, and also some options that are available. We realized that none of us have the kind of transportation engineering planning experience to answer some of the technical questions that have come up from the neighborhood. So we did propose that we add money to the contract that TJKM Transportation Engineers currently has, an additional $10,000 to help us with those technical questions, because we want to be in a good position to discuss the options and have really answers for the neighborhood. In terms of program costs, the additional cost with this kind of program are additional enforcement from the Sheriff's Department, signs, permit decals, staff administration. There is revenue. There's $10,000 that was included in, as a permit condition for legacy partners to help offset the cost of this program. And then there are also, there will be revenue from fines for parking permit violations. So I guess I got to remember to keep moving this along. And then the last is, we have scheduled a meeting on March 19th at the L'Oreola Building with the entire Greater East San Carlos community. And we will be doing, so our next steps are to do outreach and develop and present options for the discussion at that meeting. And our goal is to get back to the council to be able to recommend a program in June of 2015. And that's sort of an update and sort of an overview of what we plan to be doing. And I'm open to any questions or comments.
All right. Thank you, Elaine. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Elaine. Couple of questions. Let me start with, there was one item that surfaced, it was a matter of some concern for folks in the community about, in the staff report, it talked about, I think there was an option of, or something to be considered of selling permits to businesses as well as to residences. And I understand the source of the concern, which is people fearing that spaces in front of their homes were going to be not available to them. I didn't quite interpret the language that way, but I'd like to know what staff was thinking of with that, what's contemplated by that item.
Okay. Well, one of the things that we did was develop this list, it was, I think it's Attachment Five, of sort of the issues that we currently are aware of. A lot of them came out of the petition from the neighborhood, and some of them came out of our discussions at the staff level. And one of the issues will be what happens with the businesses. Of course, our goal would be to have the businesses park on site, and that's what's in here, but what we're doing is laying out some options and some issues that we'll be discussing with the, with the community. These are not recommendations at all. They're just, what do we do about the businesses and what have some other communities done? And so one of the options would be that some communities do allow businesses to have a certain number of permits, maybe one or two, at a higher cost. Remember, the cost to residents of this program would be free, so a higher cost would be some cost. But it's not a recommendation, it's just an issue, an option.
And my second question actually is, I suspect for Greg, just to confirm what we were talking, you and I were talking about this afternoon. We do have the, I realize I'm the head of any particular proposal, but we do have the statutory authority if we wanted to say no. The only property owners in this, in an area governed by this permit program who are entitled to the two free permits, or whatever the number ends up being, are residential property owners. In other words, we can distinguish between residential and commercial or retail, residential and non-residential.
That's correct. You would be able to consider that type of a regulation and differential.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Bob?
Just to clarify, so are you saying that we can have a parking policy for the residential, but eliminate, in other words, the, anyone who owns commercial would be out of the program? Is that what you're saying?
That's right. You have a lot of discretion to craft the, any kind of a program to meet the community needs. That might be one option to identify differences between commercial parking needs and the residents' interests and develop a program that...
Okay. So even though it's not, it's, and basically it would, this is not a property owner, we wouldn't couch it as a property owner parking permit, it's a residential property owner parking permit?
That's, that would be something you could certainly consider.
I just want to understand that you, we can do that, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that you have two layers there. One, the cost, obviously, would be free for residents, and there may be a cost for businesses. And then, you know, the other thing that I think we'll explore with the community at these meetings is whether or not it makes sense to have different zones. So you may have, you know, on the, if there's a commercial business on that block, maybe there's a different sticker for that block, something like that.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood completely the question by Mr. Albert. Thank you.
Okay. Cameron?
Thank you. So just so, to clarify, the permit program is being proposed for just a couple blocks on the East Side, is that right?
Well, that's one of the things we'll be discussing with the neighborhood. The area that was included in the condition is much larger, but our anticipation, especially from the petition that was submitted to the council, is that the focus of the concern is south of Holly.
I see. And so if folks north of Holly wanted to enter into the program, they would have to go through the similar petition program that they've processed?
You know, we have to figure out, that's one of the questions I've been talking to the city of... to the city attorney about already, and, and will also be working, one of the things we'd like the consultant to be able to help us with, is how do we get that vote? Because that is, one of the conditions is that it be, you know, a positive affirmative interest in participating. And at the meeting on March 19th, we'll be talking about, is there interest north of, of Holly Street as well as south of Holly Street?
And, and just so I understand some of the background, since I was not on the council when the Transit Village was approved, the, there already exists, or there is perceived to be a problem today, is that right, with commuters on Caltrain who are parking in the neighborhood? Is the feeling just that the Transit Village exacerbates that problem? Or is there something about the reconfiguration of the, of the train station? Is the feeling that people who live in the Transit Village will be parking in the neighborhood, and so that, that will make the problem worse?
I think when we were, we had actually a discussion with TJKM because they're doing some ongoing work for the city. And one of the things that came up at that discussion was, there will be the reconfiguration, and that could increase the number of people who move off the El Camino and are potentially interested in, you know, search and find a way to park in the neighborhoods. But that's one of the things that we would be exploring, is where, where are the issues and what, are they going to get worse?
Through, through the chair, just for your clarification, one of the issues that came up, Cameron, is, is constructing the Transit Village is effectively going to shift the Caltrain parking lots south.
South, right.
And so there was a thought, there's a concern that as they get further and further away from the train station, there's a greater and greater incentive to say, I don't feel like walking that far.
That makes sense. And then just one last clarifying question on this question of business permits. So when we're talking about business permits, we're talking about employees, is that right? You know, people that are commuting to work, they're looking for a place to put their car while they're in employment at a local business. We're not talking about customers, right? Because that wouldn't really be practical to provide.
You know, I don't have the answers yet, but just in the brief discussions that we've had, the idea is that customers were probably, the two hours would be enough time for them to do their business and leave. I think the concern is the existing, you know, just, we don't have the answers on this, but we know it's an issue of the existing businesses along Old County Road. And how do, you know, what would, what would this effect be? And what options do we have for dealing with that issue? Do we change the parking requirements on Old County Road, et cetera, et cetera?
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I just had a couple of questions. Actually, just one. And I didn't, didn't hear this come up, but is there an issue currently? I suspect I may hear from some people, of business employees parking in the neighborhood right now? I mean, I'm seeing nodding heads, so I assume that's to be true.
We don't have documentation of that, but it certainly appears that way to us. I mean, I, you know, and that our TJKM, who did the previous parking study for the downtown, which was part of this neighborhood, their feeling was, yeah, that that's, that's part of the issue, just, just from the type of cars and timeframe, that's, that appears to be already going on.
Okay. So I get the impression that even though we have a residential parking permit program in progress, there's going to be free permits, it sounds like you're still looking for input, and it's, this is very much an unsettled program.
Absolutely.
And you're looking, in the meeting on March 19th, is find out what neighbors are feeling, find out what they do and don't want, and then move on from there.
Right. Exactly. Part of this update to you is just to say, these are the kinds of issues that we're looking at. Did these make sense to you? Are there things you would add? Are there things you would, you know, comment on? These are very helpful. But yes, the whole goal is to be able to go on the 19th and bring, you know, some more information to answer some of the questions, and also to bring some options and some issues and, and work very closely with the community on this. We want this to be something that works well for them.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions of Elaine? Okay. Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and we do have two speaker cards. And the first would be Patty Marsters.
Okay. I'm probably going to be all over because I think I can address some of the issues. McHugh especially has had problems for a really, really long time. I think if this was a priority, we've talked about this for 20 years, 20 years, okay? If this was a priority, I think things would be moving a little quicker. Have you seen the flex signs for the bus on Industrial? They're buckets of sand, okay? And yet, and you guys are putting together a folder about how much time it's going to take for Public Works and to put up the signs, buy the signs. Have you seen those signs? Temporary parking permit decals. Temporary parking permits can be pieces of paper. If you want to do it, you'll do it. Also, it's already a problem on McHugh. They've said problems from the train parking, problems from the baseball games, and you're adding density to East San Carlos, you're adding density or like potential density to Old County. So that's what's going on. I live on Cherry where residents accommodate the businesses for the most part, and I think that can continue. I don't want to penalize my neighbor businesses. Only recently has there really been a problem that I've heard with all-day permit, all-day employee parking on Cherry Street, and that's toward Industrial. And I think that developed after the two-hour limit signs went on Industrial at the request of businesses, I heard. So my question is, residents weren't, I'm getting kind of excited. The residents weren't consulted. So this is one of the paradoxes of dealing with the city. Did you guys hear a report about two-hour parking limits on Industrial? Did you find out who was going to pay to put those signs up? How much time it would take Public Works employees to get there and get home? And did you find out how much it would, if they need another sheriff to go and patrol? And right now, Hall Street residents are feeling the impact of employee parking on their street, and they don't want now permit parking, they don't want any more intrusion of the city into their lives.
Patty, can you wrap it up, please?
Also, I'm trying to be patient because, sorry, have to breathe. Trying to be patient because it's a process, but then you guys go and put $10,000 like it's a routine thing? That's not right. So I have more issues that came up because Hall Street is like, we don't want this. Is leaving your home in front of your house, or leaving your car in front of your house for more than three days, is that abandoning it? Are the police going to come and check my wife's car because she stays at home with the kids and she doesn't move it? These are more things. So I don't understand why businesses part of the outreach and, and yet they, anyway, I think that's it.
We understand. Thank you.
You too.
Catherine Blink?
First, I'd like to say there is already a huge problem. I live on Cherry Street. I can rarely park in front of my own home. I can rarely get in and out of my driveway during the day because people park so close to the edge of my driveway, and our driveways are single-car driveways. I have to say, most of it is employee parking from the businesses surrounding me. I do not think, when the permit process, hopefully we will get permits to park in front of our home, is done, that businesses should be included in this. Take Old County Road, make it so that people can park on Old County Road, their employees can park there. But, or their employees can park in front of my home and they can move their cars every two hours. I work in downtown Redwood City. I move my car every two hours. That's just the way it is. But I really resent when people are parking their cars in front of my house from 6:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night, and I have to call the police to get their car moved so I can get out of my driveway. So my main point is, businesses should not be sold permits to park in front of our residential homes. We pay our property taxes for our homes. I keep my sidewalk in repair. I don't appreciate the employees sitting out there throwing their cigarette butts in front of my house that I have to sweep up. So it's a little off the prop. And the other thing I'd like to say is, we were promised this years ago, years and years ago, and it is a huge issue on the 1,000 block of Cherry Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Ben Fuller? Ben, you didn't put down this item, but I assume this is, this item you want to speak on. It's all right.
Good to see everybody. Thanks a lot for looking at this issue. One thing that is a little bit confusing to us is how this idea of businesses got on there. I'd heard a bunch of technicalities about it's not showing a deeded parking spot in front of their house, but what's the real difference if they're all going to be parking in front of people's homes? I live on the other side, but this is like a, one of these examples of like a completely non-negotiable issue for us. There's just no other option than to not have businesses park in front of our homes. Otherwise, we're, we're in a total stalemate. And really, that's because of the promises that were made and the expectations that were given as part of the Transit Village. Dimitri and others, I mean, they went through a lot of details about how the Caltrain people were essentially putting this problem onto us by creating this externality of a need for parking because they were overcharging for their parking, which no one wanted to pay for, so they'd park in our neighborhood instead. And we had tried to address this in many other ways, but one of the things that, as much as I love all you guys, we were not successful at was getting Caltrain to take on their fair share of ownership of the parking problem. They still insist on charging these exorbitant fees that no one's going to pay. So people are still going to park in the neighborhood. So ultimately, I don't know how you guys are going to solve this. I know it's difficult. I don't really know how that thing about businesses got slipped in, but everyone caught it, thank God. And, you know, I mean, I know you guys want to do the right thing here. I really appreciate that, and I'm assuming this is going to be more of a formality, and I'm hoping it's going to be a formality and that we'll just get this resolved like we thought we would. So thanks a lot for your help.
Thank you, Dimitri.
I'll let you, Ben.
Oh, Ben, I apologize. Dimitri, I apologize to you, too. And Dimitri, you're up next. I was just thinking ahead.
Ron? I used to consider you a friend, and I'm not sure about that now. So the deal here is, to me, this shows the, the kind of momentum that occurs in this, in this city with, with the current makeup of council and staff. This was supposed to be a residential permit parking plan to mitigate impacts of the Transit Village, and now it's turning into potentially giving businesses parking and taking even more spaces away. So you heard what I said earlier. That stands. I would like to meet with each of you one-on-one to discuss what I, what I see are the terrible impacts that are affecting our community. And the point here, and I think what Patty Marsters was doing when, when she was getting folks to sign the petition, was just, let's get something started. You don't have to be perfect. Start with some kind of pilot program. It doesn't have to be perfect. I've got a printer. I'll print up some parking permit things for you guys. You know, I won't charge you $10,000. You know, I mean, let's, let's get real here. Start with something, and let's see what happens. Let's make the adjustments, and let's do something that actually works for the community. I am tired of the pro-business, anti-resident sentiment that I see permeating this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dimitri. Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. Thank you. All right. I believe, Mark, you had a, I'm sorry. Oh, I, I apologize. Come on up. You can fill out a card after, afterward.
My name is Richard Harz. I live in the 900 block of Montgomery. And I was wondering if we could have where we're supposed to park, little marks, what, like they designated where your car's supposed to park? That would be handy, then it wouldn't stop, say, neighbors from parking in the middle of the, your house, and you can't park in front or be, or behind. I thought that should be added in there. And I go back to before your guys' time and go back to when they put in, they had a L'Oriola Theater, and they had to get rid of it, so they put an R-rated zone in our area, which most of our neighbors now don't know. And then they closed down L'Oriola School and used to let the people that lived on the other side of the tracks have be bussed over. So then when they closed down L'Oriola School, we had to go back and drive our own kids to the school, like Britain Acres and things like this. So he's right, we've been messed over quite a bit going back in history, but we get tired of it after a while. But thank you for your time. I'll go fill out my form now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
I live on McHugh Avenue. And from my observation regarding parking, it seems to be that people, commuters don't park in the designated parking that, you know, for Caltrain. I see commuters all the time in front of my house. They're walking to Caltrain, and the reason is because, I guess, it's too expensive. So if there was a parking permit program, they wouldn't be able to park there, they'd be parking in the, you know, in the right spot. I think it's pretty simple. I think a lot of people have talked around a lot of different ideas, but I don't think that there's much of a problem other than people that should be parking in the, and Caltrain isn't, or they aren't. And now, it seems to me that it's a pretty simple solution. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Okay. Anybody else like to speak? Okay. All right. Mark, you had your light on?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of observations prompted in part by comments and in part by some more reflection after, on the staff presentation and those comments. I do agree with the speaker who said that, or a couple of speakers who said, we ought to, you know, get a move on doing this. I think we all want to. I don't think that's really an issue. But I want to put that in the context of, I do think it's important that the staff review and the community outreach actually talk through the process, and particularly make sure that folks in the neighborhood understand the downsides to permit parking programs. And there are downsides to permit parking programs. At least everybody I have talked to in other communities says, says that there are. I suspect personally that the upsides will outweigh the downsides, but what I would like to avoid is the, the, you know, sort of buyer's remorse situation where people feel like, oh, well, gee, you didn't warn me about A, B, and C. I like D, E, and F, but A, B, and C are really bad. So I, I would make, like to make sure staff does that. And that actually relates to, I think, the notion of, let's do this expeditiously, let's do this quickly, but let's also, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to launch something and then, then find out that there's a whole bunch of glitches in it that make people angry. I'm reminded a little bit of our experience with the Eastside Connect Project, which I think actually has ended up being a nice project. It had some problems. It, you know, certainly cost a lot more of city funds than we had anticipated spending on it, worth, worth spending. But I remember in part, when things were rolling out there, I actually thought we were going to find people on the east side, bottom line, reject it. I certainly got an awful lot of negative comments in emails from, from folks there. And, and yet that was something that was embraced earlier. So it just emphasizes the importance of making sure people understand what they're getting into.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. This is an informational item, so there's no real action to take on it, right? Okay.
One quick comment?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
As we move forward with this, exploring this program, the primary goal of the process is to work with the community, to understand what the community needs and desires are. Our hope is that when we come back to the council later this year with a program, that all the people here tonight will be standing up and recommending that the council vote for the program that's being put forward. While the business community within that neighborhood is something that needs to be addressed with the program, I addressed with the program, I think Ms. Marsters put it very well when she said, we don't want to penalize the businesses, but the purpose of this program is to address the concerns of the residents over there. It always has been. So that'll be our focus. So I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I want to encourage you all to attend, you know, the March 19 meeting and bring your neighbors along, because the more people we have there, the more the issues we'll be able to tackle in one bite, and the quicker that this will get back in front of the council. And if we need to have more meetings, we certainly will have as many meetings as it takes to work this out. This is from the city's perspective, other than, you know, putting up signs and figuring out an enforcement regime, it's really the folks that live over there and own property over there that are going to have to live with this 24/7. So we want to make sure the program that comes forward meets their needs. The city's needs here, in terms of an operational issue, really come second. We need to figure those out and provide the information to council, but we need a program that's going to work for everybody. And I know that that was the original sentiment and intent of the council when they put these offered to put these measures forward as part of mitigations to the Transit Village project. So we'll we'll seek to honor that intent.
All right. Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Malpe, I forgot to Jeff, I forgot to mention earlier that since if we do this correctly, the net result is going to be an increased utilization of the Caltrain parking lot. Maybe you ought to talk to Caltrain and see if we can't get a piece of the action they're going to get from the additional sale of the parking spaces.
Bob?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. If I could speak to Mr. Malpe's comments, I would recommend, and again, I know everything costs money, but I really think this is so important that realizing that we've identified a March 19 meeting, and I'm sure it'll be in the website, and I'm sure it'll be in the paper, and I'm sure it'll be up here, and I'm sure it'll be everywhere, I would recommend that that we send out a card to every, every homeowner on that side on the east side, every business owner on the east side, and every property owner on the east side, which may mean there's a couple with a business in, but it's almost double kill. But, I mean, that way, everyone will at least have gotten notice of that, if it's possible. I realize it's the 23rd, but I would imagine we can get some sort of a little card mailed out. If that, I'm not trying to usurp what you guys were thinking. Maybe you're already going to do it, but I think that would really be important, and at least we can say we, no one didn't get a notice of this of this meeting. So, I mean, that's what I would suggest that we could do.
All right. Good idea. Okay. At this time, does anybody have any objections of moving the consent calendar item 6J, since it relates to this? We may as well talk about it now?
You're running the meeting.
All right. Let's do it. All right. So 6J, adopt a resolution authorizing an increase of up to $10,000 to the current contract with TJKM Transportation Consultants for technical assistance with the implementation of an east San Carlos residential parking permit program.
I second.
All right. Discussion? I guess not. Jeff, was there any comment you wanted to make? You look like you were moving to say something.
Well, since it was pulled by a member of the public, I thought we might just want to extend extend them the opportunity to see if they wanted to come up and speak on this.
All right. That sounds fine. Anybody want to come up and talk? I think Patty wanted to.
The reason why I pulled that was I felt that you should hear the report before you decide to spend $10,000 for more help with a study, when, as I said before, you've been through this for 20 years. You don't need to study the problem anymore. Put some things in effect and study that, I think. But like I said, I'm willing to go through the whole process and take my time and let everybody have their say and be patient. The other thing is, why $10,000? It's like so close to the number that Legacy is giving for the whole program. I mean, do you really want to spend more money? Shouldn't we, I mean, you could do it good, fast, or cheap. And we haven't done fast. We want to do good. I think cheap is still in there. So I just, it's like one of those other things that you look at that make you wonder what you guys are really thinking about in the back of your head. And I don't know, maybe these guys are friends with these guys, huh? I don't know. So that's why I said you should talk about the report first.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else like to speak on this item? All right.
So if I may respond?
Sure.
The idea here with the consulting dollars is to augment the contract we already have with TJKM to do this additional work. This isn't planned to be a study. It's actually planned to be help with designing and implementing the project to move it forward in a timely way, so we're not looking to do another study. These folks will be with us at the meetings, able to provide technical traffic assistance data and thoughts, ideas, to move this process forward. And I can't speak for the entire staff, but I don't know anybody that works at TJKM.
Okay. So this is not more study, this is facilitation?
And implementation.
And implementation, correct. Exactly. Okay. All right. I think we've had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. On to now item 8A, consideration of introduction of ordinance adding Chapter 5.45, regulating delivery of unsolicited or unsubscribed paper, plastic, or composite materials on private property in the city of San Carlos. I think that's Mr. Rubens.
This will be my presentation, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. This item came out of the strategic plan last summer to try to come up with a way that we could regulate and prohibit the depositing of the types of materials identified in the title of the ordinance from being deposited on residential properties without permission. The problem that was identified were numerous at the study session that we had, but the the main point is that the unsolicited and unsubscribed depositing of these materials without permission leads to accumulations of litter, unsightliness, security issues. When they, when the materials blow in the wind or are crushed or driven over by automobiles, they can end up in the city's storm drainage facilities. They could end up polluting San Francisco Bay and the Don Edwards Wildlife Refuge. We have other, we have another refuge that's not as commonly known, but up above Crestview, there's a wildlife refuge where blowing litter could be a problem from 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 these types of materials. To be clear, it's not directed only at newspapers, but it's directed at handbills and any type of literature that people would deposit without permission. Now, one of the features of the ordinance is a registry that would enable residents to place their property address on the city's website and with a binder that would be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week with the latest data, so that anyone wishing to deliver such materials would only be delivering it to those that did not opt out. In other words, they would be delivered to those who say, yes, it's okay to deliver these materials to my property. We believe that that provision is important from a from a perspective of constitutionality because we need to provide those who are delivering materials an opportunity to deliver those to those who desire to have them. The ordinance, as designed, makes the depositing of the of these unwanted materials to someone who has either let the city clerk know, notified the provider of these materials, or posted a sign on their property saying, do not deliver to my property. The violations for that would is designed in this ordinance as an infraction. As you can see in the staff report, that would enable when someone violates this rule to be to receive what amounts to equivalent to a parking ticket or a minor violation. But the fines can still be steep, and they're per violation. So the first violation is $100 fine, the second's $200, and the third is 500, and that's per violation. So you might imagine if someone is delivering many, many of these items on the same day or during the course of a week or month to the same address that has notified either again through the city's website or with their sign, those fines can add up to quite a bit. The difference between an infraction and a misdemeanor is a misdemeanor could, with a conviction, lead to a larger fine of up to $1,000 and the potential for six months in the county jail. What I'm trying to, my recommendation is, at least this time, to see how the ordinance goes with an infraction as the penalty, rather than create potential burdensome enforcement mechanism where I am, as the city attorney, charging misdemeanor violations for this type of behavior. So that's the recommendation. That's something that could be changed. Most of the other ordinances in the city code, when they're violated, are considered misdemeanors. So that is definitely an option the council has. I did prepare late in the day, in the interest of providing the council with some options, some alternative language in the in the code section for exemptions. Originally, the the ordinance or the ordinance that was presented and posted originally had some exemptions that were related basically to government process. Notices by the city or government agencies, delivery of legally required public notices, subscription papers and literature that's requested. So an example of that is if somebody says, hey, go ahead and deliver that, put it on my porch, that wouldn't be a violation because it'd be advanced consent. But we added an option for the council to allow for literature delivered by nonprofit organizations, registered campaign committee, a federal, state, or local candidate, or state or local initiative or referendum. In the interest of providing the public with information, the addition of that item is does not discriminate amongst different viewpoints. It's simply a another exemption from the from the requirements to post to the do not consent registry. So someone who was distributing those types of materials would would not have to review that registry before they delivered those types of materials or left them on someone's property. We don't think that that because that that exemption isn't the same as routine or planned delivery of materials, that does not contribute significantly to the problems I identified earlier with litter and clutter and and security issues. So that's the end of my staff report. I'm available to answer any questions.
Cameron?
Thank you, Greg. I think this is a question more for Jeff. If this ordinance were to pass, how long do you think it would take to get a do not deliver list up and running? And what would be the main mechanism for letting the public know? And how might they submit information?
I think it would probably take a couple months, but primarily because you'd want to give people a couple months to really have the outreach that the list is available. And we would use our our typical sources to do that, the website, the notify, the community newsletter. And we would probably continue to market it pretty extensively, I would say, the first year, to try to get the maximum amount of reach and then periodically market it again. You know, what we've done in the past with, you know, similar type new programs is prepare postcards that can be handed out at the farmer's market and other community events to just raise awareness. And we found that once you, once you reach a critical mass within the community, it kind of markets itself. And, you know, because, you know, there's likely a few significant repeat offenders, they're will likely get the message fairly soon during the program. And then there's going to be the fly-by-nights that have no idea, and they breeze in and out of town. And, you know, that'll be sort of the ongoing struggle, I think, those folks from outside the community.
And then just a question for Greg. You know, Greg, I appreciate all the work you put into this. I know you spent a lot of time doing a lot of due diligence and research to make sure that, you know, we have an ordinance that is fair and legal. And I just wanted to ask you, I know, is there a specific city on which this ordinance is modeled after? Is it amalgamation of other cities?
I'd say this is an amalgamation of other cities that have similar ordinances. I looked at several.
I see. And, you know, there's always this question of constitutionality and have those other city, are you are you fairly certain, based on the other cities that you've looked at, that the, or can you speak to the concerns about constitutionality based on the experience of the other cities for which you modeled the ordinance?
You know, I, we were not able to locate any litigation over the ordinances that I looked at, so that was one of my concerns. The second is, we have experienced with similar issues in San Carlos over the years. About 20 years ago, there was a big controversy over news racks and the city's attempts to regulate the haphazard placement of news racks in town. And so the what you see now on Laurel Street is the result of that, that we were able to regulate time, place, and manner of news racks, but we couldn't discriminate against providers, for example. We also had a great deal of my recent experience involves our sign ordinance that has some of the same issues about free speech and expression. We also, I also have some, did a great deal of research regarding solicitation at some of our local businesses for day laborers. The issues of all those types of cases are, in a lot of ways, similar. It's content neutral, reasonable regulation, not too difficult to comply, but focused on what our goal is. And in this case, we've set forth the purposes of the ordinance, and that's to reduce waste pollution and the problems that we've identified in the ordinance.
Thank you.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few questions. My understanding, Jeff, is that in order for this, in order for somebody to run afoul of this ordinance, we would basically have to have either a law enforcement official or code enforcement official observe the act of depositing handbills, prohibited handbills on or regulated handbills on the the address of somebody who was on the do not deposit list. And so what I'm curious about is, is what do you think it would take in the way of enforcement dollars, once we have the list up and running? And I suspect there's an address up in Arroyo that probably will be the first person on your your list. What do you think it'll take in the way of enforcement resources to actually get the message out there? Because without the enforcement resources, the message is not necessarily going to go anywhere.
Well, that's a good question, and I think the best answer I can give is only time will tell. I think in the case of what you would consider to be the ongoing repeat offenders, initially, it will be rather simple. We'll be able to talk to folks in the community who are having these things delivered to their property and start to get a sense of time and date and all that, and then we can deploy resources in a really specific way. And then there'll be ongoing training of city staff, code enforcement staff, as well as our police department, so that when they observe these things, that they'll have the tools to to be able to respond as well. And the hope is, you know, after a rather concerted initial effort, that this will be the the type of code enforcement activity that very much dwindles over time because the ordinance has had its intended effect.
Yeah, I would certainly hope that be the case and would expect that to be the case, except that I, the one caveat I'd make is that I believe a lot of these deliveries are actually taking place at, you know, 5:00 AM, 5:30 AM. So let me just say, just speaking for myself, I wouldn't object to actually explicitly allocating some resources once we have a critical mass of folks on the do not deliver list to actually go out and enforce this. actually go out and enforce this, at least for some period of months, to get the message across to folks.
Very good. I'm prepared to deputize you and the vice mayor right after the meeting.
You know what? That'd be fun.
Can you loan us out a squad car?
A white one. You can drive. The, yes, nowhere to be found. Greg, as you and I talked about this afternoon, probably, other than the issue to be addressed by your amendment that you provided us, my biggest concern with the languages proposed is that it doesn't really target what I think of as the party of economic interest, which in the case, I'll just use a newspaper as an example, it's the publisher, not the party that actually is delivering most of the value and the transaction is at the publisher's end. And I know that if we make it difficult and expensive for the delivery to take place, there won't be a source of people to do delivery for the publishers to turn to. But is there anything that we can do to more directly go after the publishers?
Well, in the, it's not going to be as, to go after the publisher is, in my opinion, as simple as issuing citations or those types of fining mechanisms, if you will. And that's because the publisher is probably not in San Carlos. We probably, to actually serve a citation, we'd have to go there. There might be business relationships that might make it hard to do that, that we're not aware of right now. But the ordinance does have the ability, gives us the ability, coupled with basic general law, to file a nuisance claim against someone who is intentionally just ignoring the requirements, and perhaps, this is hypothetically, instructing people to deposit this stuff on property anyway, despite the ordinance, for example. Or they're creating, they're concentrating in one neighborhood and creating the types of problems that the only remedy is to go to court and ask a judge to issue an injunction to stop them from delivering based upon some ascertainable standard. We have identified this as being litter in the ordinance, for example. So having described it as litter in our local ordinance and being able to draw on state law that defines litter, I think we would have some mechanism to go after a publisher that refuses to comply with our rule. But it's not going to be the same, and that's a different process. It's a civil lawsuit that would have to be brought.
I see. But the nuisance angle, which is that different process in a civil lawsuit, is, it sort of grows out of this ordinance and provides another avenue in that hopefully doesn't occur situation where somebody is deliberately thumbing their nose at it.
But, you know, the person that is actually depositing the material on the property is the person that is also the last person in line, and that dovetails into my recommendation to call this and to limit this to an infraction.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Bob?
Do we know, Mr. City Attorney? Hello? Do we know of any other cities in the Bay Area that have an ordinance like this?
Yeah, there is, I think I put it in my prior staff report, but there, South San Francisco has something like this, and I think, I may be wrong, but I think Los Altos has a similar ordinance in Los Gatos, I believe.
You know, and I understand that you can't skip the person who's delivering it, but, you know, it's unfortunate that the individual or individuals that are doing this delivery are not, how do I put this, titans of industry. I mean, they're just working people, you know? And so it's unfortunate in my mind, but I understand that those have to be touched. I wish there was a way to sort of skip over, but I understand there's a lot of legalities that have to go through it. That's basically it. I, like I said, I think it's just a matter of trying to get everybody understanding in our town that if we get enough people signed up for this thing, it's going to cause some people to pay attention, and that's what we have to do. We have to have people pay attention. And then whatever the courts do, the courts do, but I think that's the key, and see what we can go with.
All right. Thanks, Bob. I just have one question. Greg, any success stories?
You know, I don't know how successful the other cities that have these ordinances in place. I have not heard of anybody not being successful with such an ordinance when they have this, but, you know, I could report on that next time, because this is just introduction. So if you'd like to know the answer to that, I could look into that a little bit more.
It might be kind of nice to know who has seen a significant reduction in this type of activity, and how well it's working. I mean, maybe there's ordinances that are having no effect at all, but it would be nice to know who's getting some real results out of it. Well, I don't.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to, and Greg, perhaps you can help me out here, because I want to include your amendment. So I'd like to move introduction, or I moved to introduce ordinance number?
1483.
1483?
Yes. 1483, yes.
1483, thank you. An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, adding Chapter 5.45, regulating delivery of unsolicited or unsubscribed paper, plastic, or composite materials on private property in the city of San Carlos, including the amendment provided by the city attorney for modifying Section 5.45.080.
I second.
All right. Move in a second. Any other discussion?
I'll just say that, you know, I strongly support this, obviously, and I, the genesis of this, although it's been discussed for a long time, you know, in recent months, we've just heard a lot of complaints from residents. I've met with some personally, we all had the experience of being at a charity dinner where one of the residents said this was the one issue that he was concerned about. And I think, you know, Congress at the federal level has done a lot to regulate the ability for people to kind of opt out of marketing material. So I think everyone's aware that there's a do not call list for telemarketing. There's also anti-spam legislation for email spam, so everybody who's sending email has to have an unsubscribe list. But there's no real way to opt out of having material left on your porch, or on your lawn, or in your driveway. And as Greg mentioned, it's wasteful, it's a nuisance, it's all just essentially goes into the recycle bin and is paid for at public expense to dispose of it. And unlike the post office, where you can have your mail held when you go on vacation, this stuff just piles up, and so anybody who's walking by knows you're out of town, which creates a security problem for your home. So I'm really glad we're doing this. I think it's going to, you know, just generally, I think people want to feel that in their home, they can be free from marketing material if they choose to, and I think it's going to go a long way. So I really want to thank Greg for all your hard work on this.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with virtually everything that the vice mayor said. I just say that because there probably is something in there that I didn't agree with. All right, I'll say I agree with everything. But I'd also like to point out that I'm very glad that Greg was able to provide that language in the amendment, because this actually, in my mind, strikes an even better balance of maintaining freedom from unwanted marketing materials and still preserving the right of political association in all of its various forms, and in fact, manages to track pretty closely what the federal government did on the do not call list, which has a very parallel exemption for exactly the same reasons. So I too thank you for all your work, particularly the work you did on the fly this afternoon.
All right. And I'll add my thanks. You know, it's amazing, we talked about this for so long, and we were tippy-toeing around it, and the language just looks so simple. One, I would like to point out, there's one clerical, one error that just, it's actually, it just needs, in the ordinance, there's where it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to distribute," shouldn't that be "any person to distribute"? Okay. That's the only grammatical change I would make.
Well, now, Mr. Mayor, you're going to require him to bring it back again.
I hope the addition of a single letter doesn't cause that.
No, you can, that's a typographical error.
Yes.
And actually, you're bringing it up before it's introduced. You clarify.
Great. All right. Are we ready to vote? Okay, Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. And with that, I think we're adjourned.